Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, I have three, a read through. Public hearing for establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for 91 and 99 Arthur Street. A request has been received from 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC to establish an obsolete rehabilitation district for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000 to facilitate the redevelopment of the property. The affected property owner has received formal written notice of the public hearing and the public will provide, will be provided with an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing, however, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in this meeting. Public hearing for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate application from 90-
Mayor.
Whoops, sorry.
We'll do comments on the first one first.
Okay.
If we can do that one first.
Okay. So, you want to do public comments?
On that first public hearing first, yes.
Okay, if there's any public comments on the first public hearing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
Good.
Thank you so much for having me and my wife. This time I brought my beautiful wife. She's a very big part of our project and what we have planned. So, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to speak. My name is Chef Jason and we're here to, can we pull up that first slide if possible? Yep, one more, yep, beautiful. So, yeah, either one, this one. We're all familiar with this building as we drive down 31. So, what we're here for this evening is to try to, you know, be approved for an Oprah abatement on this space. You know, we're taking an old eyesore building and we have done numerous, numerous hours of research and planning on trying to make it into a beautiful environment that will allow us to, you know, support the community with jobs, careers, and a great place to come and eat and have a great time, a restaurant. And so, we're here tonight to ask for your help and become partners with the city to help us move forward with this project. And the beauty shack. There, so that's what our vision and that's what our goal is and what we're trying to get to. So, that's why we're looking to really get support from the city so that we can hopefully get to this point. It's a very financially deep project and that's why we're here to ask for your support and your help.
It's the same project you presented here a few weeks ago.
Absolutely, yep.
Nothing changed?
Nothing's changed, yep.
Are we allowed to ask questions? I just want to know, have you talked to anybody in the Bayview condos?
We are definitely reaching out to them and have meetings and plans to set up some definite communication with them. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and I really appreciate your time.
Anybody else on this first one?
Hi, my name is Phil Gorski. I live in the Jocelyn Cove condominiums and thank you Chef Jason for doing this property and your wife. I guess I'm speaking for all of us in Jocelyn Cove that we would support the restaurant and would like to have it there and help them in any way they can. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Matthews. I'm in Bayview condos. I'm at 63 Arthur. You sold the-
Yes.
Right there, right behind you, that's all Bayview. Why don't you turn around and introduce yourself? So, personally, I'm just speaking for myself. There's 18 of us and a few of us are here and Bayview's condos are half round, year round and half seasonal. So, you've got the year-round people here tonight, most of them. The restaurant's great. It'd be fun to walk to a restaurant, fun to walk home. We have a couple of concerns. I don't know, is there a site plan done yet? None submitted? Okay. Have you guys done the site plan?
So, we have appointments, yes, we have appointments with the zoning administration tomorrow to start that process. They felt like this abatement was kind of, unfortunately, they had to go out a different way. This is a big part of getting this project off the ground. So, while we understand there's site reviews and things that need to be done, we're ready for all of that. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with the zoning administration.
Okay, great.
Yes.
A few things on the site plan, there's three parcels there. There's a sliver right behind the pizza building. That's a small piece right up against the lake, right behind the pizza building. That's deeded residential in perpetuity. It's also in our deeds that it's residential use, not residential but residential use in perpetuity with that property. That's one of our big concerns is that that piece is a good buffer right there with the lake and that we want to keep it. It's useless as residential, you can't do residential on it, it's too small. But it's a great buffer piece, so that's a concern for us. So, we would, I don't know if they want to encompass all three and combine them into one parcel. If they do, I would not be in favor of that. I'd just be in favor of leaving that sliver alone because that's got deed, that's got 19 deeds with that thing in it. And so, it's residential use. The other thing, lighting on the parking lot. The ship there, a lot of people take pictures from the boat ramp, on the boat ramp dock. We also like the view. Low level lighting, down low, pointed low, away from the ship. It's beautiful at night. You've got a real resource there. What else? Couple of things, dumpster location. Even with your fence, it's great that you guys have a fence ordinance, that there are required fences around it. They still attract skunks, raccoons, seagulls and crows. We'd like it on the other side of the restaurant, on the north end, north side of the restaurant. Noise. The boats come by, we have a parade every morning between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock from the marina out to the lake. It wakes us all up. That's okay, not a problem, expected. But we would prefer, I would prefer and several of us would prefer that we don't have music outside at night past a certain time, reasonable time that I can still get some rest and get up at 5:30 and listen to the boats because they're coming anyway. The marina, if they have a marina, there is a no wake, there is no no-wake zone. So, the boats come flying by in the morning, a lot of large waves. They really, if they have a marina, they should really consider a no-wake zone because another 10 or 12 boats, whatever it is, just more, it just beats up our docks and their docks will get beat up too. So, they should consider a no-wake zone. With that, I'm looking forward to the restaurant, just with a few tweaks on the site plan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I didn't know we were going to talk about no-wake zones. We have the same problem in front of our Jocelyn Cove and we're adding dockage because we're expanding the buildings. We have talked several times to the manager of the marina and sometimes he says he'll do something, sometimes he says he'll talk to the other captains. But I've noticed that maybe you're not up at that time, but they usually start about 4:30 in the morning. And, and yes, they don't, we do have, there is supposed to be a no-wake zone within 100 feet of the dock. We've had encounters with some of the captains saying, well, my boat doesn't go that slow to not make a wake. Well, I find that impossible, but that's what they tell us. And we've had to call the sheriff a few times saying that they're coming within 100 feet of our dock and causing wakes. So, if we could have a no-wake zone along that area, that would greatly help us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Miller, Nasty Area Chamber of Commerce, 400 River Street. Just would like to express our support for, on behalf of the chamber, for this project. We've been working with the Tillmans for a number of months, providing resources and referrals, and this is a great partnership opportunity for the city to partner with a developer and entrepreneur to deal with a blighted, underutilized property that's in a high-visibility location. And we would appreciate your consideration and support of this project without, and we've done a lot of homework with them on financial documents, without the support of this certificate tonight, it will be very difficult for this project to get going as well as being sustainable in the future. And so, we strive for something that will be there for the long term, to serve our residents and our visitors and our economic sector. And, you know, these 35-ish jobs are going to be very important for us in the future. And so, we appreciate your consideration of that. And again, the chamber is full-heartedly behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public hearing for obsolete property rehabilitation rehabilitation exemption certificate application from 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street. An application has been received from 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000. The affected property owner has received formal written notice of the public hearing and will, and the public will be provided with an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated in the conclusion of this public hearing, however, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later this evening. Any public comments on this one? Public hearing to discuss Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund development grant for improvements of Veterans Memorial Park North Riverwalk. Purpose of this hearing is to seek community input regarding the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application that was prepared by the city for improvements to Veterans Memorial Park North Riverwalk. The city clerk completed the required notices of the public hearing and the public will be provided with the opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated on the conclusion of this public hearing, however, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in this meeting. Any public comments?
Evening, Mayor, council members. Michael Shemansky, 332 Fifth Street. And I would like to say that I am very much in favor and hope that you would as well into repairing the north side memorial park. If you have not been there within the last few years, there isn't any riverwalk on the north side anymore. It's all basically completely deteriorated. I'm not sure, I haven't been there over the winter time, but we had it cordoned off because it was unsafe. It's a shame that we have this beautiful area on the other side of the river with views to our downtown that you can't even pass on, as well as it's a little bit disrespectful to our veterans. So, our veterans organizations do a great job keeping the front of Veterans Memorial Drive looking nice. I would hope that with this grant money, we can do the same for the rest of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to citizens' comments on agenda-related items.
You don't need that again, do you?
No.
Okay. Just want to rise again in support for the social district application from the Portage Point Rentals project that will go in the old Fillmore, the former Fillmore Restaurant. We've been working with the entrepreneur there for a number of months and this would be an important component for them, so we ask for your consideration of that as well to help that restaurant be successful in the long term. So, appreciate the support.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda, all items, all agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval minutes, payroll invoices, notification regarding next study session, consideration of Catamaran Races Association of Michigan holding two. Manastee Regatta is the first on June 17, 18, 2023, and the second on July 29th and 30th of 2023. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of establish, ah, here we go, establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street. A request has been received from 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000 to facilitate redevelopment of the property. A public hearing on this request was held earlier in this meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Sure.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. So, residents from Bayview and the other condo development have kind of raised some concerns and I guess I'm just wondering if we approve this? Is there still a process where we can take into consideration some of the concerns that they voiced tonight and make sure that there's, those are accounted for?
Yeah, so, this is all documented, it's public record and then the, so, once they submit a site plan, it'll be reviewed. Whether or not it's a permitted use or not, that needs to be determined if they meet certain requirements for the, I think there's kind of a stage area that's going to be considered and depending on that size. But, yeah, I think the planning or the planning department can look at those items and see if they can work with the developer to address those issues.
So, a site plan isn't typically done before the request or is it?
So, this is, this is one of those, as they mentioned, it's kind of a chicken or the egg. It's kind of, they have a vision and then they have to meet certain, you know, items for parking and things like that. So, it's, I don't, they wouldn't pursue this project if this wasn't approved, so it still needs to go through the regular planning process and site plan review as well.
All right, and then my last question is, we're talking about potentially 12 years. How do we come up with that number of 12 years?
So, under the state law, that's the amount of the Oprah tax abatement is 12 years. So, that's where that comes from.
For any property or just this property in particular?
For Oprah's, that's, that's for, yeah, for this act.
So, the Hampton got an Oprah, didn't they?
They received a CRA, which is a commercial rehabilitation.
Okay, so, a little different.
Yep.
I was just wondering, it says 91 and 99. Are those just like next to each other parcels or?
They are, so there's a lot split and they're, so they kept them as two different addresses.
Okay.
That's the reason for that.
All right.
I just want to say thank you to the representative from Jocelyn Cove and the Bayview residents because I've been thinking about them and how they would react. I had a gut feeling that 100% of people would love to see a restaurant there, but I'm glad to see that they brought through their concerns. I don't think they're insurmountable. I think it's a great opportunity for the developer to talk to the people at Bayview and Jocelyn Cove and see what he can do to take a look at that sliver of land. I think that was probably one of the, one of the highlights of it. The dumpsters, again, it's going to depend on what the site plan calls for and what the regulations call for. And the no-wake zone, well, I don't know how you go about doing that, but I wish you luck on that. I understand that. I used to be a voter myself and I'll have a go, so I understand that problem. So, thank you for coming forward. Those are my comments.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate from 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street. An application has been received from 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000. A public hearing was conducted earlier this meeting on this request. This item could be considered if council took action to establish Oprah District in the previous agenda item. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate application for 99, I'm sorry, 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC for the property located at 91 and 99 Arthur Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a grant application to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for improvements to Veterans Memorial Park North Riverwalk. The North Riverwalk has aged and deteriorated and requires substantial upgrades. Rehabilitation plans include replacing steps, walkways, retaining walls and landscaping. Additional enhancements include utilization of maintenance-friendly materials, bios walls for storm water treatment, solar lighting and ADA accessibility improvements. The project cost, the projected cost of the project is $605,000. Funding for the project includes the local match and a $300,000 grant from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution to apply for Michigan National Natural Resources Trust Fund grant. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Bill, is this going to include those steps that come down right from behind the memorial, right down to the, to the walk through?
Not right by the ban shell area. It will not include those. Let me, I'll pull up a map to show you.
Those steps are really in bad shape.
I'll go to, yeah, that was the second page on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. So, are you talking about on the left side of your screen?
Yeah, maybe halfway almost.
So, the ADA accessibility is from where those handicap parking spots are?
Right.
And then kind of leading down and across. Unfortunately, with the topography there and the steepness, there's no way to make that ADA, but I could take a look at the steps.
I have railroader tires or something going down. Never was opposed for people to hold on to.
Okay, and it looks like item six is over, we can zoom into that. Do you recall if we're replacing those steps as part of that?
The one, the one item. So, when we, when we talked to the DNR, there was concerns about this project being tied into the amphitheater because this, this trust fund doesn't fund amphitheaters specifically. So, there was, there's kind of a line getting drawn in the sand at those steps. I think there's probably the opportunity to do some work there, but they even specifically said do not show the amphitheater in the, in the application. So, that's kind of right on the line between the two. So, but we can look at them, I know what you're talking about. There are-
A lot of people crawl down that hill. Those steps almost, I saw old people almost get killed.
Before that died, it did say replacing the timbers on those steps. So, that is part of it.
And some handles.
So, it's in the cost estimate, right in the line.
And the main difference with this one is we're increasing the match to over, to 50% over, which will give us more points. So, we're hoping third time's a charm with this application.
Anybody else? Take role, Heather.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a contract with SRM Hospitality LLC DBA Lake Gulls Concession and Rentals to operate the Fifth Avenue Beach House concession stand. The city issued a request for proposals to operate the Beach House concession stand. A subcommittee of the Parks Commission reviewed the responses and is recommending SRM Hospitality LLC DBA Lake Gulls Concession and Rentals be awarded the contract for Fifth Avenue Beach. At this time, council could take action to enter into a contract with SRM Hospitality LLC DBA Lake Gulls Concession and Rentals to operate the Fifth Avenue Beach concession stand and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, I've been coming up to the city of Manastee and going fishing off that pier since 1988 before I was, took me a couple of decades to actually move up here. But I will tell you, that concession stand has been so well-run by Kendra and the food has been so fantastic, it's been like a light switch has gone on over there. It's just absolutely wonderful. I was really happy to see this on the agenda tonight.
Any else? Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a contract with British Landing Enterprises, Inc. to operate the First Street Beach House concession stand. The city issued a request for proposals to operate the Beach House concession stands. A subcommittee of the Parks Commission reviewed the responses and is recommending British Landing Enterprises, Inc. the contract for First Street Beach. At this time, council could take action to enter in, into a contract with British Landing Enterprises, Inc. to operate the First Street Beach House concession stand and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Were there any other proposals or was this the only one for the First Street Beach?
So, there was two proposals that were submitted, but one was late and the subcommittee chose not to open it, so we only had one proposal that was considered.
Okay, thank you.
This isn't the same ones that are there or is it, you don't know? That was there before?
Is it the same one that has been, no? Okay.
It's a different one, okay.
Any else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a construction contract for Lake Shore Drive improvements. City is capitalizing on development efforts at First Street Beach, brownfield funds, developer contributions and ARPA proceeds are proposed to repave and add parking spaces around the beach loop. The project was publicly bid with one bid receipt, being received. At this time, council could take action to approve the low bid of $675,897.95 from Elmer's Crane and Dozer, Inc. and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I've got a couple of questions. When did the bid go out? When did the bid go out?
I'll look at my calendar real quick to get the right date.
Because I'm just wondering if, did they get enough timeframe to bid this project? Because we knew about it for a long time, and then why'd we? We only got one bid.
Can't seem to find the bid date on my, um, do you have the?
Why?
There was, there was two weeks. It was a two-week bid.
We only had two weeks to bid on it.
It was advertised on a Friday in the newspaper and then advertised on the website for plans available on that following Monday.
It went out on February 28th, and it was done on Monday 28th. So, why did we wait until spring? Why didn't it come out in the fall, so we can have contractors bid, so they can get it on their agenda?
So, I think it was a combination of just all the work that's been going on and also a lot of communication that's gone down with the developer down at the Hampton site. So, a lot of design changes have happened over the last couple of months, which, which kind of ended up being why it took a couple extra weeks and even a month to, to design it than what we anticipated for. So, some things, some things that changed were, originally, the project was going to be a rehab project, a mill and fill project, and then once we got the soil borings and reviewed the cores, then we, we made the recommendation that it could no longer be rehabilitated, that we had to reconstruct it, which entailed a lot more design, which took a little longer to do. So, in a, in a perfect world, we definitely would have liked to bid the project a little earlier. There was, there was three contractors, I'm sure, you know, that were, were interested, and two of them ended up, and I, two of them ended up not bidding, and I discussed with them after the, the project was bid, and they both said that the construction schedule was more the issue rather than the bidding window, so.
Yeah, I think that if they had more time to bid and knew about it, they could have gotten it on their schedule, and we lost an opportunity there that could have saved us some money.
It was a tight timeline. It was near the engineer's estimate, though, the final bid, or the one bid we did receive.
Yeah, the engineer's estimate, our estimate was $667,000, so I was around 1% away from the engineer's estimate, so we, we actually thought that we got a pretty good bid on that.
Because usually you have three bids, right? Or it gets thrown out?
Well, we competitively, so for a certain range from $7,500 to $25,000, we want three bids, but then over that, we need to publicly bid, and because it's publicly bid, I mean, 47 contractors downloaded the.
So, we, so we reached out to 47 contractors within two hours of Manistee, and only three showed up to the pre-bid meeting, and then only one bid, and the other two, I personally talked to after the bid opening, and Swodorski was one of them, and the other one was Blue Restoration out of, I think, Midland, and they, they both said it was the construction schedule. They already had the full year's worth of work already planned out. So, so if we bid it earlier, then we could have gotten more.
Yeah, we do a project for, what, two years now, and then we waited this long, just put it out there and give them two weeks, and most contractors have their schedule already made up for the spring back in the fall. So, I think a little bit of planning on our part would have been a lot better to get. That's the only thing.
Any else?
Would it be worth putting it back out? Or are we on such a timeframe we can't do that now? I think May was when it was supposed to be done, and with Hampton opening up. Yeah.
Yeah, that, exactly. So, if we were to put it back out, we'd be looking at fall construction, because we wouldn't want to build this, obviously, in the middle of the summer. So, we'd be looking, if we put it back out to bid, it'd be fall construction. We were authorized in October to start with the work, and, you know, and I wish we could have done it faster. There's some things I think that really were positive of going through the iterative process of the design. We're putting in 45 parking spots. 48 of those are going to be paid for by the hotel. There's 17 additional we've worked into the project, so that's, we think that's a positive overall. It seems like a simple thing, just to design around the beach there in that area, but it's kind of complicated with what we're trying to do with existing section, and, you know, we, we take responsibility. We wish we would have done it faster, and we'll keep that in mind. We'll do our best to get these things out as fast as we can, but on the other hand, we don't want to really sacrifice any quality of our work either, so it's kind of a trade-off.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the purchase of Parks Equipment and Refuse Containers. The city has prepared a large purchase of Parks Equipment to support several park improvement projects. The projects include the Disc Golf Course, River Walk, First Street Beach, Duffy Park, Sands Park, and Morton Park. Items are split between two vendors, Sinclair Recreation MI Deals Pricing and Trashcan Warehouse. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of Parks Equipment and Refuse Containers in the amount of $132,921.11. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on the garbage containers. I thought the price was kind of high. I was just kind of questioning that. I thought I saw three for $6,000 or something. I don't know why.
Which item? Jeff isn't here, but.
Yeah, looking at the wrong.
Which item?
Trash containers. How much are the trash containers?
They're unbelievably high. It was last in Parks, actually, that's why that was not with Sinclair. If I had priced it to this vendor, then it would have been with Sinclair. I can't do the cost of those either.
$2,000?
Pardon me?
For three of them?
Yeah.
Three?
Yeah.
What, what size trash can do you get for $2,000?
They were 36 gallons, but they were all, they were slats that are durable, weather, you know, resistant, supposedly last, so with the other communities, and we did price those out specifically. That's the way, you know, we really tried to find for less, so, yes, they are way over price, should all be in that business.
But those were specifically, Jeff worked with the Parks Commission, those were requested by the Parks Commission, is that correct?
But they weren't like elaborate, was it other communities doing? Because we actually shopped at price, so we were the best deal we could find for a good quality trash can.
Are any of those really nice trash cans going to Rees Park? Because I don't see Rees Park listed in here at all. So, I'm just curious. I know they've always had a little bit of a problem with the trash cans. That's why I'm asking. Yeah, I, Rees Park is in desperate need of having bleachers repainted, and they're not on this improvement plan. I'm not, I'm not going to discount your improvement plan at all. It's just that I would like to see money spread to all the parks when possible. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
And a lot of this was payment for, for the Mingre grant, where we, you know, Morton Park, Duffy Park, Sands Park, and, yeah, so I don't think, Rees wasn't in that one, but I think that's something we can look at in the future.
I think we should.
So, is this price on top of the 35, is it $35,000 we allotted for Morton Park, $35,000?
So, there was, yeah, we received a $90,000 grant with a variety of things, but we also had a match, and part of that match was getting the trash cans and some of these other items.
So, this amount is on top of that amount?
No, I think this is all bundled in with the, with that, with that project, with the Mingre grant.
Okay. So, then you don't really need $132,000, because we have 35 set us. I'm confused again, because remember when we had this conversation, how we did it with the trucks? Like, we already had money set aside, and then they didn't purchase it, and then they brought it up again, and it looked like we were giving double the amount? That's, that's what I'm trying to find out, if we're still, if this amount includes that $35,000 that was allotted for Morton Park?
I can get you a breakdown. This is only, so the overall grant and the match was, I believe, $160,000, $170,000. I can get you the exact figure, and then of that match portion was the $35,000 from Morton, but in terms of the actual amounts breakdown for Morton, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's all part of the project. We leveraged that $35,000 that was budgeted into this to get the Mingre grant for $90,000. So, it's all part of a big project, where grant portion's part of it, the Morton Park, money that the city set aside, and then we have some refuse funds for the trash cans. So, it's from a variety of sources that we make up the overall project amount, if that makes sense, but it'll be a nice, we'll get a nice spreadsheet for everyone in council about it.
Okay.
Bill, and your staff knows for March 7th, what is Morton Salt talking about constructing a parking lot? Are they going to take the whole park, or just put a parking lot on the end of it?
My understanding, some, it's a member of the Parks Commission, they're setting up meetings with Morton, Morton Salt about a parking lot. I don't have any specifics on that, but I think that's been something that's come up.
Okay, I think, and I think on this, with $132,000, it would have been nice to have a breakdown of what they were buying, so you know what you're voting on here.
You can get that. Mr. McCullough was sick today, but we'll get that for you.
I think I see. Okay. Anybody else?
Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes, do I get that right?
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of distributing an estate gift for the Ramsdale Theater in the amount of $31,700 to the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts to improve and maintain the theater through a lighting system upgrade and other upgrades in the theater. The city received an estate gift for the Ramsdale Theater from Alice Hendricks. The Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts has identified a lighting upgrade project that would be appropriate use for these funds. It has requested that these funds be released to them to help fund the project and other theater improvements. At this time, council could take action to approve the distribution of the estate gift for the Ramsdale Theater in the amount of $31,700 to the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts to be used to improve and maintain the theater through a lighting system upgrade and other upgrades in the theater. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I got an email before the council meeting started, and it was from Ginny Pelton. She is a member of the Ramsdale Board. She says, "The vote tonight is for the money Alex Hendricks left the Ramsdale. I sold her home and knew her well as Rose Joffe. We have been in contact with her best friend, who went to every show at the Ramsdale with her. Her will states for the Ramsdale Theater. Her elderly friend said she would never have meant it for the city but programming at the Ramsdale. I have a statement from the executor of the estate also. Our RCA operates as a DBA Ramsdale Theater. I hope you will represent her wishes tonight. Thank you." Ginny is on her way in. She's, I just texted her. She thought this might come up around 8:00 tonight, but she has the statement from the executor of the state that this should go to programming. So, I would just prefer, if council members agree, that we amend this motion to say that it's dedicated to programming.
I have a question on that. Can we, if, if the state or the intent behind it was that it goes to the Ramsdale for the programming, it should go there, but is there a reason we have to put strings on it? Can it just go to that board to decide where they utilize that money unless, do you know what I mean? If that's the intent?
Maybe I can respond to this, because I've dealt with this now for the years that this estate has been subject to probate. We're bound not by what people told, or what people heard, or what people believed that the person want, wanted. We're bound by what the Last Wall and Testament indicates. The Last Wall and Testament indicates that the gift is to the Ramsdale Theater care of the city of Manistee. My interpretation of that, without any other direction from the court, is that that is to the theater itself and not to programming. And so, I had offered that opinion to Mr. Bradford, who I think included it in his memo to city council. While I appreciate that people believe that, and no reason to doubt them, that the deceased expressed those desires and enjoyed the programming, that's not what the will says. If the will said, you know, leave it to, for programming at the Ramsdale Theater, then, yeah, we can do that. Our obligation as the recipient of this gift, which it is, the city is the recipient, is to honor what is the specific language in the Last Wall and Testament, and I think that the Last Wall and Testament language is, right now, it's clear that it is for the Ramsdale Theater itself, not for programming.
So, since this has gone on for years, have you had conversations with the executor of the state at all?
I don't, you know, there was, I read an email that was sent. Somebody said that they talked to Saylor about something. I don't really recall that. It might have been years ago that I had a conversation with someone. But if someone thought that that's what the interpretation of the will should, should be, you know, ask the judge for that. Ask the judge to construe it, but I think the, the unambiguous language in the will does not include for programming. Now, when the money is provided to the RCA to make these capital improvements that they might have otherwise made with other funds, that'll free up some money for programming, so the result may very well be the same. That money will be, more money will be available for programming when they don't have to use funds for the sound system, for instance.
Maybe just going forward, when they, the Ramsdale says that you can give a gift from your estate, maybe they need to tell, you know, maybe you should specify what you wanted to give.
You know, usually, as attorneys, we like to do that. As attorneys, when a client is giving a charitable gift, the first question you ask is, do you have any specific purpose for that gift to that organization? Because if you do, we need to put it right in the will. Otherwise, you're bound by what the, the clear language is.
Mayor, one of the, the points that George and I have talked about a lot is, is to try to maybe clear up some of this confusion, excuse me, for people that might want to give estate gifts down the road. And the RCA board at some point is going to draft a letter, kind of clarifying that, and sending it to all the attorneys in town and the financial planners, just so that they know that they have clients that maybe have estate gifts, just to make it unambiguously clear. The nonprofit organization that runs, or that leases the building and runs it right now, is actually called the Friends of the Ramsdale. It, it is the same nonprofit organization that did the restoration, the Ramsdale Theater Restoration Project, it just renamed itself, but it has two valid doing-business has names. It does business as the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts, and it does business as the Ramsdale Theater. In this case, the gift was to the Ramsdale Theater, 70 Maple Street, Manistee, Michigan. If the gift had been to the Ramsdale Theater, 101 Maple Street, and it had gotten mailed over to, you know, the Ramsdale Theater, I think it might have been a different interpretation. So, I think that letter will help to clear things up, hopefully, down the road, so there's, we don't have any.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Do you have something else?
I'm sorry. I just want clarification. Can't the board decide what to do with this money?
No, the, any organization that receives a charitable gift is bound by the specific terms of the charitable gift. This charitable gift was received by the city on behalf of the Ramsdale Theater, and we're bound by that. And so the only reason that we can provide it to the RCA, the funds, is because we're, our expectation is they use it for the purposes that we're asking them to use it for. So, so no, we can't, we can't supplant our view of what that money should be used for from the specific terms of the will, without some judge's interpretation that it's different.
So could they ask you to use it for programming, and you agree to allow that?
No.
No.
Not, not in my opinion. In my opinion, right now, we're bound by the specific terms of the will, which says Ramsdale Theater. It does not say programming. And so, now, if someone, if the person representative or executive of the state wanted to go back to the court and ask for some interpretation, I would expect the judge would say the same thing that I'm saying, but you know, that's, two attorneys don't always agree on the same thing, so.
No, thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the bylaws for the Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission. The NRBC is asking for approval of their bylaws that were drafted by the city attorney and approved by the NRBC at a regular meeting on March 13th, 2023. At this time, council could take action to approve the bylaws of the NRBC Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a street vacation request. A street vacation request was received from the owner of the property at 114 Pine Street, parcel number 515134971307, for a portion of Second Street, which abuts to the requestor's property. After further review by staff, it is recommended to vacate the portion north of the sidewalk to the requestor. At this time, city council, at this time, council could take action to approve the modified street vacation request. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Portage Point Rentals LLC to receive approval for a social district permit. The downtown development authority would like to request support and approval for Portage Point Rentals LLC, doing business as the Golden Stag, to receive a social district permit. This will allow Portage Point Rentals LLC, the sale of the adult beverages that can be consumed in the identified social district area. Portage Point Rentals LLC will operate their renovated restaurant space at 318 River Street, formerly operated as the Fillmore. Michigan Liquor Control Commission is requesting city approval. Even though this is a license transfer, MLCC needs the resolution to advance their approval for restaurant inclusion in the social district. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the resolution for Portage Point Rentals LLC to join the existing social district.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancy on Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, PEG Commission, and Tree Commission. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received for the Tree Commission, Dennis Otto, 333 Fifth Street. At this time, do I got to nominate him first? Okay, sorry. I'd like to nominate Dennis Otto, 333 Fifth Street, for the term ending 12/31/25. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from the police and the fire department, and we will start with Chief Glass.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our 2022 annual report. I've tried to keep the words to a minimum, pictures to a maximum. So this picture here is compliments of Chris Van Kovejak. As you know, he's a wonderful photographer. He does great work for us. This is our police department 2022. New addition to our police force, Officer Brandon Spalding, was hired, I believe, this fall, successfully completed his FTO programming. Going on to statistics, looking at patterns here, in 2022, we saw about 500 more calls for service. So when you see dispatch complaints, that's when someone picks up the phone and calls for a police officer, whether emergent or not emergent. And so we saw uptick, and I've used a three-year pattern here to kind of see, to try to identify patterns, although 2020 was kind of an outlier with COVID. But we have an increase of 500 calls for service approximately. If you look at the self-initiated activity, that's gone up over 1,000. The numbers inside of there are, our traffic stops have gone up significantly, and then our blight enforcement, those numbers are inside the self-initiated. And that's when the officer's not being dispatched. What are they doing? Are they enforcing traffic? Are they following up on criminal investigations, ordinance enforcement, things of that nature? That's in that statistic. As you can see, our written complaints have remained pretty flat at 1,400. Our citations have almost doubled. The officers, one of our department goals was to be more visible, an attempt to deter crime. In our profession, traffic stops are one of the most visible things that our officers can do. The officers did a wonderful job doubling our traffic citations. Arrests are slightly increased, and then our accidents are somewhat significantly decreased. You know, one of my sergeants asked if there's a correlation between our traffic enforcement and accidents. I don't know if you can get to there in one-year data, but I'd be curious to see what happens next year, if we have a pattern. I might be a little more encouraged to make that correlation. Just some of the major categories of crime, if you see, pretty consistent with years past. What I will note here is an increase in larcenies, and in that number, we saw, I think, an increase of 23 larceny from motor vehicles. So a slight uptick in larceny from motor vehicles, and that's really the pattern with our crime statistics. I think I've put it on the public, and our goal this spring and summer is to raise public awareness, to eliminate opportunities, to work with residents to make sure they lock their doors. It happens, but it's very rare that a window is smashed to make entry into a vehicle. So it's important for us to try to eliminate that opportunity, and we do that through social media, opportunities on the radio. I know that Sergeant Van Sickle is going to be speaking with the Wagner Center. Any opportunity we can, raise public awareness or public education as far as locking our vehicles, to try to eliminate that opportunity. And so, very fortunate this year to obtain some equipment through local revenue sharing. As you can see on the left there, our radar trailer, a great tool. We're getting a charging issue worked out. But what we've utilized this for, aside from being a radar trailer, is we've actually had our sergeants go out in the public, someone who files a complaint about traffic, we actually can show them data and say, here's what we're seeing at times, and it really helps us allocate our resources. You know, if we have a problem speeding on, let's just say, Eighth Street, it helps us identify, when is that really happening? So it gives us that hard data. Also, if you remember, when we purchased this, I think there's 12 or 17 different signages. So there's a no-drink-and-drive, men-at-work, detour, and we anticipate utilizing that in months to come with our detour. So it's a great tool. To the right there is our interview room recording system. We were able to replace that with revenue sharing grants. That was originally in our capital improvement plan. We're very fortunate to be able to fund that with grant funds rather than other funds. And our most recent was for our critical incident response gear. So what you see there is our incident bag that has medical supplies, tourniquets, additional ammunition, and then Officer Hayner is our model as far as our ballistic shields. And so this is for critical incidents, responding to something like a school shooter. And this year, we're very fortunate to be, to have received $41,000 in grant funds. So we're very appreciative to be able to fund those projects. Accreditation. So where we're at with accreditation is, we have an accreditation team. We anticipate having our mock assessment, I'm being told, in May. Mock assessment is, the assessors come in, and it's kind of a trial run to tell you where you need to improve before we have the actual assessment. So I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so we're hoping to have our mock assessment in May, and then months later, have our official assessment. So we have a team of five. It's a tremendous amount of work, and they're doing a great job with it. 2022 blight, so those of you who don't know, this is our GIS system that was put together with Lucas Richardson, that helps us track blight for enforcement purposes. It just gives you a physical snapshot picture image of the status of blight enforcement. Green is resolved, red is significant blighty structures, but I wanted to have this up there for those of you who aren't familiar with that GIS system. What we found is this, this helps us, this aids us greatly in blight enforcement and coordination, although extracting data from this has been a little bit challenging for our staff, so we continue to work with Lucas to help smooth that process out. Total blight complaints this year, excuse me, 2022, officers handled 395 blight complaints, 45 civil infraction citations were issued, and 21 municipal citations were issued. And just to give a visible, a visual of what type of blight complaints that we handle, we have some before and after pictures from last year. So sighting projects, before and after. Officers also deal with sighting and window projects with blight. We deal with full structure demolitions. And then outhouses or sheds, we also deal with, sometimes giant holes in the side of buildings, our officers encounter, and we're very happy to have these resolutions. Again, these are just a few of the before and after pictures we have. I would like our officers to take more pictures. These are pictures that we have. So what you don't see here in this picture is a stack of lumber trees here, which has been removed as well as fixing the building. And then trash, junk. So just want to give you a visual representation of what we're seeing out there in the before and after. The only thing I really don't have pictured here is junk vehicles before and after. We don't have any photographs of those. An important piece, I think, here is the collaboration, the collaboration with the Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Committee, and that highly motivated group, and what the work they're doing as far as identifying resources and cleanups and policies and working with SafeBuild, rental inspections and permitting. And then this year, city manager and I, working with the County Land Bank for, to use grant funds for some of these blight elimination projects. So again, it's a collaboration, and we're happy to see that continue. Mental health. I put this up here, it was mentioned at council before, just to give council some numbers. In 2022, we had 87 total calls for service. Thirty-eight of those are written complaints typically. Written complaint is made when we take a person to the hospital. We take them into protective custody under the Michigan Mental Health Code. And so one of the numbers I think is compelling is that of those 38 complaints, our officers spend 1,100 hours on these complaints. And the next slide kind of shows that 1,100 hours in taking them to the hospital, sitting with them at the hospital while they try to identify, they go through all their processes, evaluation, if the judge deems them to need to be hospitalized, finding a bed. So 1,100 hours spent on those three things. And so the important piece here is that myself, along with the other law enforcement leaders, continue to collaborate with CMH and Munson Healthcare Manistee to find solutions, to try to provide better services. Those conversations have to continue, and they do. Again, this is, going back here, you know, I think I spoke to council where this isn't something we can impact at a local level, but your voices can be heard as far as resources and beds and things of that nature. Just a very specific incident I wanted to bring up, US 31 Bridge last winter, subject jumped off the bridge into the icy channel below. We had an off-duty sergeant utilize rescue disc and our fire department personnel, along with the Coast Guard, suited up and went out into the ice, and they got in the water, and they saved this individual. But I utilize this as a way just to show the resources sometimes that are used in these types of events and encounters with mental health. School safety is a topic that's been mentioned. Just go through what exactly we do for school safety on an annual basis. So we have mandatory three lockdowns per school, and that's a mandatory. I know, working with MAPS even just today, they do more than that, but it's a mandatory of three. We have staff there at all these lockdowns, and we provide feedback. We have moved to a model where we provide feedback in writing so that people can recall that at a later date to help them. Monthly school safety meetings are important. School administrators in the room, law enforcement leaders in the room, and we're tackling everything from truancy to safety grants, to lockdown exercises, emergency management's in the room. So all these things are tackled and talked about on a monthly basis, and it's very productive. And then tabletop exercises. Very fortunate this year to be allowed to bring tabletop exercises back to, specifically to MAPS. It was myself, Sheriff Kautowski, we had the EM in the room, and Dave Skorka, Michigan State Police. And tabletop exercises, for those who don't know, are basically PowerPoint scenarios. You walk through with staff, so we can walk through these processes, both internal and external communication amongst the staff with law enforcement in the room, to go through different scenarios. So it's kind of almost like a mental rep before you get to a physical rep. So we found them valuable. I've told the school that if you need me for 15 minutes or three hours, let me know. We can make it work. Really support these because, like I said, it forces internal and external communications. This year, we're very fortunate to have Sheriff Kautowski come in and teach to MAPS civilian response to active shooters. So I believe they had, if not all, most of their staff present, so it was nice to be able to provide that information to them. And it's just all part of this school safety program that we have. And then from a police department standpoint, active shooter training is now part of our annual training curriculum. We sent three officers and a sergeant to instructor school. We put a significant amount of resources towards that training, and it's something that we do every year. Beach safety. Council approved the use of ARPA funds for beach safety lights. We purchased the lights. We thought it was more sustainable, up-to-date information. Great feedback from the Parks Commission regarding signage, which we forwarded out to the DBW, and they quickly responded. But part of that program was our officers teaching beach safety or water safety in the schools. Again, you're going to hear me say it a little bit, but public interaction, community involvement was a big department goal this year, and one of the ways we accomplished that was working with the Great Lakes Water Safety Consortium to come up with a PowerPoint presentation and to teach this in just about every school in the city from grades two to 11th grade. And so this PowerPoint presentation can be cut down to about 10 minutes for the little kids, and you take it as far as you want for the 11th graders. But it's a great opportunity for our officers to teach to our younger generation. And if we, if we teach it to them every year, if the schools allow us to come in there, if one kid is saved by something that happened, remember Officer Hayner saying in class, then it's worth it. So again, I like the fact that it also promotes positive interaction with police and young people. And we plan to continue to do that this year. Community involvement. Like I said, one of our department goals for 2022 was to increase our community involvement. We're, one year, two years removed from COVID, want to be out in the public more and promote positive interactions with the police. One of our big events was our 2022 Kids' Safety Day. And so those of you that have been in meetings with me, I pitched this every meeting, and it was a big hit last year. Got a lot of feedback, positive feedback from the public, but also a lot of positive feedback from our partnerships, police and fires. And this is a great event. Can't wait till next year. So this year, we hope to have even a larger event. And we partnered with Armory Youth Project on it, and again, it's a way for us to have positive interaction with the public, but also give out safety tips. And when we talk about safety tips, water safety, beach safety, body safety, internet safety for parents, we're going to have the state police there checking for car seat safety, anything safety, we've invited it, and we hope to have a large event. But it was very important for us to get out in the public again post-COVID, have interactions with people. Fire Department, State Police, it was a great event, and it really helped us. When we talk about community involvement, I put these both on the slide here. On the right there, Captain Petty, Sergeant Van Sickle, and then Sergeant Peffley from the tribe is our shop of the hometown hero, which is a big event for us. But sometimes community involvement, we teach our officers, can be as simple as going to the armory and taking 10 minutes to shoot basketball with the kids. And so we promote that, along with the skate park. And, you know, we utilize our Polaris just to go down to the beach to force a conversation And so we promote that along with the skate park and, you know, we utilize our Polaris just to go down to the beach to force a conversation piece with the public and to have that interaction. Collaboration. I'm very fortunate this county to have a great collaboration with all of our departments, both police and fire, all of public safety. We have officers assigned to the Manistee County Dive Team, officers assigned as firefighters. I've got a picture here on the left is, that's our briefing for Slay Ball. And just to give you a snapshot, all the people in the room that are part of Slay Ball, and that's just who attended the briefing. So you have City, County, State, ERT, CERT, Mounted Patrol, a lot of partnerships that are willing to come to make this a safe event. And on the right, there is just a debrief, so after incident of a boat that was beached during a high storm. Fire Department, Police Department, Coast Guard responded, executed a rescue. Went back to Coast Guard Station sometime later and debriefed that situation. Again, what happened, what did we do, how can we do it better type thing. So that's important for our collaboration and our interdepartment efforts. And then I'd like to take the opportunity here, I'd be missed if I didn't mention this, but I want to thank officially Mark Cameron for his many years of service. It's been a great experience coming up with Chief Cameron, to serve next to him. So it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, Mark. I just, I wouldn't feel right if I didn't take advantage of this opportunity. I'm sure there's going to be words later down the road, but I can't say enough and to say that he's going to be very difficult to replace, I think is a significant understatement. So again, thank you, Chief Cameron. Then City Council, again, I thank you for your leadership and your continued support. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
You've had a fun holiday here. That's like three years worth of report right there. So good job. Keep up the good work. The blight stuff is like way beyond what I thought you were getting done. So congratulations for your year and all you're doing. And maybe I'll talk to you about tickets later on.
Did you get another ticket?
I got some questions. We'll deal with them.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question on the, the active shooter meeting, presentation that you did. Would it be beneficial to do that like at the beginning of the year for parents? And I only ask that because I remember when my son came home and told me that they did like a lockdown and I was like, what? Are you talking, like, I know that it's really common now, but I had no idea.
Are you referring to craze?
Yes.
So this is what we're doing and we being, Sheriff Kattowski's been doing this for years. I just stand there and add my insight. He's expanding this to the public. In fact, a few weeks ago, we taught it at the Vogue to the public. And so there's a plan for, I say we, but it's mostly him, to open this up to anyone who will come. He came to my church. He basically teaches anywhere he can. It's such a universal type of training. It's not just for schools. It's applicable to workplaces, buildings, anything. So there is a plan to expand it. So if you want him to come and teach, I'm sure he'll be more.
Well, I just think it would be beneficial for parents, especially like parents that have kids starting school. Because I know when Sullivan mentioned it, I was like, what are you talking about? Like my extent of drills is tornado and fire drills. So it's unfortunate that that's where we're at, but I think that that would be a beneficial thing for parents to understand like what they're, what the kids are doing and what actually goes into a lockdown. So they're not like, like interrogating their kids.
Telling the kids that there's a gun, that there's someone coming around with guns, maybe. Because like if my kindergartner came home to me and said, hey, we had a, someone telling us what to do when there's someone with a gun. I would have been like, I don't want my kindergartner to know that.
Yeah, this doesn't specifically talk about lockdowns. It gives options, basically run, hide, fight, but we'd be more than happy to present that.
Okay.
Especially so they, self-education, but just to know what the kids are going.
Okay. That was my only question.
You're right. It's very unfortunate. It's the reality that we live in.
Yeah.
Do you go in there and tell them to lock the doors, okay, the rooms are in, like I see on TV they talk about it?
The kids in school? Yes. When they go to lockdown, there's a very specific protocol they are to follow. We utilize the night log system that are probably still here from when you were the chief. And the key here is having these drills, having law enforcement come in and walk through and give feedback. And the schools are taking it seriously, and that's really important. And there's a balancing act there with, with young kids' mental health too. So being, and I think the schools we dealt with are very careful with that. So.
Okay.
Any other questions? I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have Chief Cameron for the Fire Department.
I'm going to have John Robidick this evening give our presentation. He's very talented. Giving him an opportunity. Also dodging one.
Tomato, tomato.
Exactly. John is a very talented individual and he's really into videos and putting things together. And this will probably come back to your days and bring a smile on your face.
You got a video? I like it. Let's see how your music is.
Hi. My name is John Robidick, firefighter, paramedic now for three and a half years. Most recent paramedic to be part of the team. Tell you a little bit about the video, what you're about to see. The statistics that are behind it are pretty simple. There's not a lot going on. We ran a total of 1,471 calls last year in 2022. Out of those calls, 1,270 were EMS-related, 201 were fire-related or other. And then out of those calls in total, we had 142 mutual aid response calls. So we went outside of the city and helped individuals outside of the city. I'm going to let the video do basically all the talk, and I'm not much of a talker, so the video is going to do a lot of it. What I did with the video is I kind of broke it down into four sections. Section one, you're going to see basically us responding to incidents, going out there, doing kind of what we do. Also incorporated with part of the history of the department. We are not who we are without the history. They laid down the foundation. We're simply laying on top of that foundation right now. So we have to represent them as well as represent ourselves. With that, the section two is most recent incidents and going out into the community. And then the next section is going to be, every single individual is going to have a little bit of slice in the video. If it was up to me, I mean, I've worked with these guys time and time again, and they are just amazing individuals. They go above and beyond, and each one of them actually deserves their own little five-minute highlight reel. They're amazing people. I've watched them do amazing things and words can't even describe that. So at the end, I gave each one their own little time slot, and hopefully I can represent them well in this video. So without further ado, this is our video. Thank you.
Lake Shore Fire Department has set a world record. Manistee Fire Station, which just celebrated its 130th birthday, is now the oldest continuously manned operating fire station in the world.
It's been a staple of downtown Manistee for more than a century, but it's one of just a well-preserved building.
390 sides of the building showing this one's so special about the historic firehouse.
The fire at 107 Hancock Street started a little before 6:30 Thursday night. Three people were in the house at the time, including a three-year-old girl.
A West Michigan teenager is recovering in a local hospital after being seriously stabbed, and police say the suspect is a teenager as well.
A Manistee County mother of four is dead after her home caught fire.
Manistee Central City, all hands, fire, fire. We have a cluster fire. 613 Hopkins Street, first in a bedroom, last in a hospital.
Fire, please don't go into 652. You control the road to Hopkins Street.
Central 651 is open.
Fire, this is our location. Hope you're in. History of residential structure.
Oh, baby.
Central Hopkins Street Command.
Hopkins Street Command, go ahead.
Fire is under control.
I'm.
My heart is with you, holding hands with your heart to see. Only blue dog is love, remember? How we knew love was here to stay. My simba, found the love, it shattered the table. Only blood, dog is love, remember? Do you wish?
I think we should clap.
This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. As I was walking that ribbon of highway. I saw above me that endless skyway. I saw below me that golden valley. This land was made for you and me. And all around me a voice was sounding. This land was made for you and me. I roamed and ramble. I followed my footsteps to the sparkling sands of her diamond desert. And all around me a voice was sounding. This land was made for you and me. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. This land was made for you and me.
Hope that wasn't too long, but it was pretty memorable. A lot of that covered a lot more than just 2022. However, it tells a lot of what we do.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Is your picture on the wall there yet, Mr. G?
Yes, it is.
Is it? Congratulations. Thank you. Got to keep that legacy going. Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Think you got to step it up next year, Chief Glass. Okay, citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Nobody? Mr. Gamble.
It's a tough act to follow. I'll just, a couple of updates. The Dog Park and Mack Par Fence, the contractor started earlier this week. They'll be continuing next couple of days to finish up those two. Um, and the clock is scheduled for repair on Friday. So worded that. And outside of the city hall, you'll notice the fire pit that Tanner Lindstrom made. I think he did an excellent job. So that is not really portable, but we can put that in areas of the social district with probably consulting with Chief Cameron to make sure it's in a safe location. But, um, it's just kind of a nice thing we can use for events and we have some wood available too from trees we cut down. So please check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff or department? Mr. Pratt.
Um, I just had two things. So, uh, the Ramsdale came up tonight and I'm just wondering, um, I know when the Ramsdale was discussed previously, there was some talk on from council about possibly, um, having somebody sit on that rather than, um, Mr. Bradford. And we haven't heard an update in regards to that. So I'm just wondering what the steps might look like in that discussion.
So I think would that have to amend the the contract with the bylaws?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what their bylaws provide. Just a city representative is on the board?
The contract is what says council can appoint somebody. But that's going to be if they'd like to point somebody else, they have that right.
So can we have that be a discussion item?
Should I do that at a study session or, okay, yeah, we can do that.
I would actually like to piggyback on that and I think Jim too, put the whole contract up for discussion. Is there certain parts of it that need to be looked at?
As long as we're talking about the Ramsdale, I think I have a solution to the problem with the donation. I think it would be really nice. I understand, um, Mr. Gamble, Mr. Saylor, Mr. Bradford. This is probably directed at you collectively. Why couldn't they put on their programs coming up? Due to the generosity of, uh, Alice, I think her name's Hendrix, Hendrix, uh, gift of thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars to the Ramsdale Theater. We are able to present this following program to you. I mean, it would still look like and should be. It's a, it's a gift in kind. You were saying thirty-one thousand dollars programming they would normally spend could offset that. So I'm, I think that would be a nice gesture if they did that. I don't know who needs to float that by the board, whether it would be Mr. Bradford or Mr. Gamble could, could talk to them or Mr. Saylor, please jump in if you don't think that this is a legal move.
As long as the money is, as we've talked about, is spent for what we can only interpret is the specific language of the will.
Yeah, it would be.
If the RRCA wants to place something in a, I don't know, in a, um, a play bill or something or certainly they can do that if they choose to.
I think that would be a nice idea. That would, that would show that the gift is going to, for their programming.
It, it also could be something that the city could, um, convey to the family or to the executors of thanking the state for this gift and what the intended use is for it. Um, you know, it's certainly something the city could do.
Okay. I think we should work on that.
Um, I just wanted to thank both the Police Department and the Fire Department. Um, I, I've seen what you guys do with the schools and the young kids in the community and older kids and it's wonderful. Um, but your presentations were great and I think your eyes of services aren't always acknowledged well enough. So thank you.
Mr. Kowalski.
Yeah, well, I liked both presentations because I, me and I worked with everybody there. So all the new guys coming in and getting older certifications. So that's great. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, other thing is like the mayor said, I would like to see a study session done too. And the last time we had something signed was 2016 on the Ramsdale. With, with, uh, Sarah Helyo with the president, Kenny, uh, we had something done in 2020 with Thad Taylor signing. All these people are gone. And that lease agreement was in, in 2020. So I think it's time for an update on that. Also, I'd like to see, uh, an update on the pool at the school. I don't know how many years we got left on where we paid the forty thousand. But I think we need to do an update on that contract also.
Anything else?
That's it.
Ms. Pynek.
Um, just like the presentations, I appreciate every, all the stuff that you guys do in both departments. Um, and then I was just wanting to know about the greenhouse on Kozie Azgo. What's going on with that? Is it going to be?
I can get an update from the land bank. I don't have, I'll, I'll find out. I'll like counsel though.
Okay.
Mr. Bachman.
Nothing more. Thank you.
Ms. Peeden.
I'm good.
And if I don't have anything, I will take a motion to adjourn.